Partnership that will no doubt not only benefit that group but will also benefit visitors in terms of exhibitions and activities. Over on page thirty-three, again, a sort of flavour of the range of community projects the team at Museum of Norwich have been delivering, including Community Culture Club, which ran into the start of this reporting period. But also over the page, on page thirty-four, a range of other activities, including, you know, that long-term partnership that we've mentioned before in previous committees with Vision Norfolk, providing opportunities for members of Vision Norfolk to come into the site, you know, meeting with staff team to actually enable them to explore the collections and get the most out of their visit. Also continuing to work with English Plus, which is a group drawn from literally across the world, and it provides an opportunity for people to come together, improve their English, but also support their mental health and wellbeing. And again, this is a really longstanding partnership we've had, and the Museum of Norwich has always been very much to the forefront of developing creative activities that support the work of those sorts of groups. And again, within this sort of report, we can only give you a snapshot of the range of activity that's taking place. Top of page thirty-six, we were talking about the connections with the University of East Anglia, and a good example of the way in which we support visits from only newer students but also UEA students, so you can see the example from March when Hannah worked with students from their Museums and Cultural Heritage Studies course. And again, we've got a long history of supporting both teachers and students on that course. Museum of Norwich also participated, as we've mentioned previously, in supporting holiday activities, including the February half term event linked to the Sirens Festival and over the Easter holiday and May half term. Likewise, Strangers Hall on page thirty-seven, again, really creative team in there at Strangers, supported by a very active group of volunteers. This year is obviously a special one for Strangers Hall in terms of its centenary. I've also included some information in the report about the work of the volunteers. They're very much love and care for the garden at Strangers Hall, which is a real oasis right in the centre of the city, and a picture of their wonderful new auricular theatre, I didn't have to Google what that was, but a sort of tiered display of the auriculas, which is very much going to be a sort of centrepiece of the new garden. On page thirty-eight, some details about the Strangers Hall hundred programme, so Strangers Hall is a wonderful building in its own right, but it's also the, if not one of the earliest, social history museums in the country dating back to 1923, so this is a really significant centenary for Strangers this year. As well as putting on a really broad programme of events and activities, the team are also redis displaying the windows and very grateful to support, we're getting from the Friends, as always, and the Freeman of Norwich, supporting both the activities and the redis display. I mean, members will be aware that Strangers Hall is a very challenging building in terms of how it fronts onto the street, so what this new project was around was trying to bring some cohesion to the sort of shop window, if you like, at the museum, and entice people to come in and explore what is an amazing complex of buildings that is really hidden away behind a rather confused frontage with a real mishmash of different periods. So we've been working with the artist Hannah Broadway, who previously worked on the Love Life Festival, along with groups of young people to create a sort of visual effect which basically links the different window spaces and which uses the windows to communicate stories of famous Norwich characters, and that includes a sort of textile collage portrait of famous Norwich worthies, so that's being developed, as I say, with some of the young people from our kick the dust groups. So look out for that installation, and we'll provide updates on the centenary celebrations at the next meeting. Linked to the centenary, Strangers at the bottom of page thirty-nine also conducted a survey of visitors to find out what their favourite object was, and it turned out to be the wooden bedwagon, which is basically a glorified hot water bottle. I don't think I'm doing a terrible injustice to it by describing it thus. But again, really creative ways in which the team there are getting visitors to sort of think about the collections and then support centenary events in different ways. So I'll conclude my report on Strangers in Museum of Norwich now, Jarrett, and obviously if there's any questions, happy to respond.
Thank you very much, Robin. Do we have any questions or comments on that part of the report? Danusia.
Just a quick comment on what that lovely new facade, I was wondering whether they're attached to graffiti of the other buildings that are on the other side of the Strangers Hall?
So we work closely with the city council because the city council actually own the building, and we do, and they're very responsive to dealing with graffiti that we occasionally get on both Strangers and Museum of Norwich. In terms of neighbouring buildings, obviously that's a bit more challenging. What we have been doing is trying to get the very best out of those windows, so that the project includes improved lighting, for example, and I know the team do work really closely with their neighbours, but I guess ultimately it's a limit to what we can do. But I know the city council are very alert to graffiti issues in that area, and are very quick certainly to respond when we have problems directly affecting our buildings.
councillor Ward.
Yes, I believe there are a couple of roofs closed off downstairs because of damp. It's still ongoing, is what I'm hearing.
Yes, yeah, there is some damp at Strangers Hall, which is an ongoing concern. I think you're talking particularly about the coach house?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, the coach house. So repairs were made to the roof, and at the moment they're in drying out period, so again, as Robin alluded to, the Norwich City Council manage those works, and currently because there were mould spores, in order to safeguard the collections in the wider museum, we need to keep that area closed off and need to continue to do so until it's completely clear. So they've remedied the issue, the leak issue in the roof that caused the dampness, they're just needing to let the roof breathe now before it can be opened to the public again.
Okay, thank you for that information, Stuart, and councillor Kidman.
My apologies, I've got a work commitment between four and six, and it's probably past time. My apologies.
That's fine, okay, thank you for your attendance. councillor Wright.
Thank you, just following up from councillor Ward's question, I'm particularly interested at the moment in the civic coach. There'll be some opportunities to come and have a look at that, it's under wraps at the moment, is that right while the work was going on?
Yeah, that's correct, yeah, it's been wrapped up, albeit though in recent years we've done a lot of work to future-proof the coach in that we had particular issues with moth with the upholstery, which has been recently replaced with a more durable upholstered seat. So yes, but you're welcome to come and have a look, I mean, it's relatively simple for us to be able to give you that, if you'd like to have a look at it on the other end, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for that. Robin, if I can invite Francesca, you'll take up the next part of the report for the curatorial update, thank you.
Thank you very much. Well, hopefully most of you will have seen lots of exhibition by now, but I'm pleased to be able to report it continues to go down extremely well with visitors. I think we've probably had around thirty thousand visitors by now since the show started at the beginning of February, so that's incredibly good totals overall. And apart from the learning events that Robin has already described, we have held a series of other events as well. We've done some joint evening events with UEA with assorted speakers and external speakers exploring aspects of the issue behind the exhibition. I'm chairing one in a couple of weeks' time, which is about shipwrecks in art in this period, symbolic meaning of shipwrecks, so that should be quite interesting. In addition, we held a conference a couple of weeks ago, which was an entire day and a half exploring every aspect of the Boston that we know about so far, which included the head of research at the Mary Rose Trust and a similar head of research at a museum in Stockholm, which also houses a shipwreck of Vasa. And that was very interesting to hear them speak about setting up museums based around shipwrecks, so that was an extremely valuable or unusual experience. We're also coming up a series of summer holiday lunchtime talks in July, which myself and my three fellow curators will be giving. Catalogue sales are going very well, I believe we've sold over one thousand catalogues now, so that's good too. And yes, everything is going really well. This morning I gave a tour to Norwich's city hosts, so they can discuss the exhibition with visitors to the city this summer. Otherwise, various other activities going on as ever. I'm working on two exhibitions based around townies and bridges, one for Time and Tide in Yarmouth for this autumn, which is all about bridges, and that will combine historic art and Ninajers collections with material from Yarmouth's collections and also contemporary material based around the Big Master Fair crossing, so that should be interesting, mixed material. And we have recently heard we've secured some notes of Turner sketches and prints for that exhibition. Other views, other people, every curator does very different things, as you know. My colleague, the senior curator of costume and textiles, Ruth, has also been working alongside myself and the UEA curators on events related to the roster, but she otherwise is focusing on a large-scale stores move, which is a huge job, which involves actually relocating about two-thirds of costume and textiles collection in the north, two hundred building works in Shire Hall, and that will be going on for several months, so that will take up much of her time for now. Otherwise, my other colleague in the art team, Rosie Brenn, the curator of modern and contemporary art, she has just opened a small new exhibition for the Common Project Space entitled 'Wall Existing', which is a photography project by two artists, Glenn Jemison and Rob Philby, and exploring the medieval wars, the remnants of medieval wars of Norwich, quite an ancient and unusual subject. And otherwise, Rosie continues to work on a film case, which is due to open in the Matilda Gallery this October, and also a couple of more long-term projects too. My colleague Georgia, the curator of historic art, after having waited for a couple of years to do it, has just opened her new exhibition in the Watercolour Gallery, Where Land and Water Meet, which is a beautiful show, drawings and prints based around the theme of Norfolk's waterways, including several cottons of various other artists as well, I think that's going down quite well. And she's also working on a reorganisation of stores, these family art stores in Castle. My colleague David Waterhouse, I don't know if you know, he has left recently, he has been the Natural History and Geology curator, he's taken up the post of the curator at Scott Polar Museum and Research Institute in Cambridge, and he left a couple of weeks ago, but he managed to complete a couple of things before he went. He did a fossil, a couple of fossil cases in Norwich Castle as part of the Deep History Coast project, and talking of newer, he worked with a group of illustration students, they're doing a project on Dogland, and he took them on a study trip to Hainesborough, and he's also, he's done various other projects with the newer students before he left. He will probably still have something to do with us in that his book, which was written in conjunction with the former senior curator John Davis, Exploring Norfolk's Deep History Coast, is due to come out in mid-July, so that would be a really useful guide to the entire Deep History Coast, from ancient geology, fossil paleontology, all that kind of thing, he's done many of the illustrations for that, so hopefully that will be coming back from the launch of that. Finally, my two other curatorial colleagues, Kate Baxter, the curator of the regimental collections, she's been working mainly on the Royal Norfolk Regimental Museum website, and she is involved in a project, she's called New View, which is aimed at the student population in Norwich. Obviously, as we've discussed, UEA and newer students do have free access to the collections, but she has been concerned that not many of them seem to have greatest awareness of the regimental collections and the wide variety of material we have here, so she's animating the website in a different way, and has also had a workplace with students from the museum sales course to help work on that project, to make it more accessible towards students, so you can look that up via the report. And otherwise, Tim continues to, I don't know how he does it, work a twenty-four hour day to both work on the keep project and still maintain his job as archaeology curator. And he's worked on the redislement of prison material in the Rattanda, and he's updating the display in the Blue Book Gallery, and has presented assorted papers on his various areas of expertise at archaeological conferences, and is, as ever, busy on writing public applications for new acquisitions and working on the reviewing of his portfolio of works of art. So that's a few of the things that's created to be up to the last few jobs, there's many more things that we have to do. Very good.
Thank you very much, Francesca. Would you say a few, there's a huge amount of work kind of being undertaken, thank you. councillor Ward.
Thank you, I'll just commend the watercolour exhibition, I'm not very interested in watercolours, but I did go and see it last week, and there were some really good ones there.
Oh, I'm glad you liked it, tell me about it.
That's very positive feedback, can we go back then? councillor Caider.
On the subject of bridges, the Cast Iron Bridge in Deptford is of course the propaganda to Norfolk, that may be advantageous to know that Thomas Penn, the evolutionary writer, also had a page on the Cast Iron Bridge design.
You did that, I'm going to move to that one.
Very interesting to know, thank you. Right, if there are no further comments or questions, we'll move on to the next part of the report, Stuart, if you can take us through the other developments, please.
Thank you, Chair. Section eight point one, Wider Impact Group, I've previously spoken at previous committees about the fact that we have a separate project group called the Wider Impact Group at Norwich Castle, which is chaired by herself, which basically looks at facilitating to a large extent the keep project, so I just wanted to update members on some of the work that we've been doing. Planning for operational changes to the museum, so obviously as we're looking at all of the phases for each of the openings of the keep, so Robin had already spoken about the fact that we get the Percival area back in October, November, and then we get the keep back approximately Easter two thousand and twenty-four, we've got an awful lot of work in order to prepare for that. So one of the things we've done is we've introduced our new branding, which hopefully members have seen, of Norwich Castle, and there's a couple of illustrations there, some impressions of what that branding will look like in situ, both in terms of the new desk area, foyer area, and shop of the castle, but also of an example there of our new maps and wayfinding. And that branding will obviously be rolled out across the whole of the castle, so we are working on where that new branding needs to sit, and it also looks at branding the galleries as well, so Natural History, for Temple Archaeology, and that will be rolled out across the whole of the museum, in turn with the bringing online of the branding as part of the project. We're also looking at managing the introduction of new admission and ticketing systems, so that includes access control barriers and integrated online ticket sales, so we are going to be controlling ticket sales going forward by the use of automated barriers, which will be integrated with our ticketing system so that advanced ticket sales will allow people to gain access to the museum without the need to purchase a ticket on site. We're obviously implementing the new catering in retail outlets, as we've previously discussed, and all of the work that's involved with that, so including new menu designs, sourcing of new retail lines, and branding both of those areas. We're developing a new venue hire offer for Norwich Castle, we've obviously got a fantastic opportunity with the new facilities as they come online, specifically the Great Hall, which as part of the design of the work for the Great Hall, as being obviously a great hall and a feasting chamber, that it's going to be by day, in the evening it will actually be able to be transformed into a very versatile venue hire area with a capacity of two hundred people, which will be able to use for conferences, for evening meals, banqueting, anything of that such, but also of course we have the fantastic opportunity with the new castle rooftop terrace, which will have obviously views of the skyline of Norwich, which will be a particularly, we hope, sought-after opportunity for us there to make some much-needed contributions to revenue for running costs of Norwich museums. As I've already spoken to everybody, we're also, we're introducing new signage and wayfinding, including new maps and plans for Norwich Castle, which actually has been a bit of a challenge for us, because the fact that we have introduced new floors and new floors within floors, in many cases within the keep, has meant that producing a map that's easy to follow has actually been a bit of a challenge, given that none of those levels really correspond with the prison aspect of the site, which is on two floors, and you can see, it's very small, and apologies, I will give a better update in future report, but you can see a small section there of what that will look like broken down, and the consensus was that that was the easiest way of interpreting the building, using colour schemes for each of the sections of the castle. We've also been looking at managing the visitor journey, and when we talk about the visitor journey, we're talking about right from the point of booking, and we've already spoken about advanced ticket sales, right through to evaluation, so we've done lots of work on how we can encapsulate much-needed data of our visitors and how we can put that to good use. We've obviously looked at the creation of new tours, and in previous reports I've given updates on what the new dungeons tour experience will look like, and we're looking at a very much enhanced dungeon tour that will really be able to tell the story of Norwich Castle's five hundred years as a prison. Another big significant piece of work is the reinstallation of galleries and facilities, because we're not planning on closing at any point through all of these transitions, and so we've already had the transition of closing the keep and then needing to remember certain key collections, such as the Egyptology collections, be moved into another gallery, which we've been having to do seamlessly really, without hopefully having too much of an impact on the visitor experience. We're currently in a position where we need to return the Egyptology sections back, but also reopen the Anglo-Saxon and Viking galleries, as well as updating other galleries where we've had to move collections, so we've got a plan in place in order how we can do that as part of the keep. And we're also planning for the health and safety and premises management considerations for again both phases one and two of the keep project, which again is quite considerable because in order, the dates that we're talking about in October is the date that we get the site, we also then need to undertake certain statutory pieces of work, such as fire risk assessments, evacuation procedures, many of which of course can be done as desktop exercises in advance, but also things like installing fire extinguishers and security and housekeeping arrangements. So all of that work is being planned as well as we speak to ensure that we can effectively hit the ground running as and when we get these areas online, and minimise wherever possible the downtime before we can then open the facilities to the public. I didn't know if I'll stop there in case there's any questions before I move on to the next section.
Okay, thank you very much for that, Stuart. Are there any comments or questions, councillor Ward?
Thank you. Is it the intention that the cafe and shop will continue to be free entry, and if so, how will the automated barriers work in that respect?
Thank you, that's a really good question. Yes, the barriers were designed, where the barriers will be situated, so that they will be upstream of the ticketing. So basically you'll be able to access the retail shop and the restaurant above without needing to be a paying member to the museum. There will be one ticket barrier that leads from the restaurant into the museum, and the other ticket barriers will be effectively, if you remember the site, at the top of the slope that leads down to the Rattanda, so you'll still be able to access the foyer area and the restaurant.
Okay, thank you for that, councillor Birmingham. Okay, thank you for that, Councillor Birmingham.
Thank you, Chair. I just wondered if the venue hire might be for a music venue? And because that was, I'm sorry, it's off tonight.
Thank you. First of all, yes, again, we had limitations previously with the Victorian print of the floor within the keep. That music was never thought in the design of that and it had a drum effect. So we had to limit any music that would cause vibrations. But the modern, albeit obviously only medieval looking floor of the Great Hall is actually designed to be a sprung floor that can absorb such vibrations. So we will be able to have music playing. And regarding to the map, absolutely. What I'll do is I'll include a better blown up picture of the map for the next report.
Okay, thank you very much. And if there are no further comments or questions, Stuart, are you taking us through the next part of the report? This is about the MEND funding.
Thank you. I'm delighted to inform members that we had made a second time of asking a bid to the Arts Council England Museums, State and Development Fund, or MEND, for a sum of £381,000 for a new building management system. And we were successful at this time of asking, which is a fantastic opportunity for Norwich Castle. For those that don't know, the building management system is the system that's effectively the brain that controls all of our heating and environmental controls at both Norwich Castle and the Shire Hall Study Centre. The current system, which we are still operating at the moment, is over 20 years old and actually still operates on Windows XP. And unbelievably, we probably should accession that computer when we actually change it over because it's been running on the same computer since it was installed in 1999. So, which is, which is, nothing short of phenomenal, if I'm honest. And the danger is being that actually the current building management system, which is very archaic, of course, in its design, if it were to have fallen over at any point, we wouldn't have been able to maintain it, such as the age of the system that we've got. The new system that's being installed will be a much more modern, updated system, which has many advantages. Our incumbent service providers for our electrical mechanical are controlled through Norse under the total facilities management arrangements at County Hall. And actually, what it will mean is Norse will actually be able to look at and control and make changes to our heating and environmental systems without even needing to attend the site. So it's a much more proactive approach to managing our systems, whereas previously an engineer would have to go on site and then the lengthy time of that being reported back. And it obviously also has massive advantages for us in that we have just spent significant money on updating our air handling systems for the temporary exhibition galleries under project refresh. And we're installing new kit as part of the keep project. So what we will then have is not just a physical kit within the gallery spaces that will have a fantastic, as I say, BMS brain in order to run those to their absolute full potential, which is a really, really good opportunity for us. And furthermore, as part of the project, we'll be upgrading, sorry, we'll be upgrading our system to run on reverse osmosis to soften the water. Obviously Norwich is very chalky and as such, we suffer from significantly hard water, which then has a huge detrimental impact on our ability to control our environment because all of our humidification systems quickly get scaled up. And in fact, such is the hardness of the water that many of our humidification systems that have a lifespan of six months only last sometimes one month before we have to replace various sensors and what have you in order to keep our humidity levels where they are. So we'll be looking to address that issue as part of that bid as well. So again, fantastic opportunities for us. The Shire Hall courtroom, I reported previously on the Shire Hall courtroom and the fact that we are treating a major outbreak of dry rot. Those works are ongoing presently. Unfortunately, we hit a bit of a stumbling block in that the extent of the dry rot within the roof timbers was more prevalent than previously known. And as such, we've had to go back to the drawing board a little bit with structural engineers in order to work out how we can keep the roof held up whilst those structural timbers are replaced. The problem being that the courtroom itself has got a terrific span, it's a huge room. And the courtroom itself is actually on a, it's on a solid footing. It's actually on a raised timber floor. And so in order to be able to support the roof, we need to be able to go through that historic floor to get to the ground base level in order to be able to take that weight. And so at the moment, we're just working with Norwich City Conservation Department in getting a list of building consents and working with the structural engineers on the methodology. We're hopeful that that work and the erection of the scaffold will be commencing in approximately six to eight weeks from now. So I will keep members updated as we go forwards. And at this point, I'm handing back to Robin for section eight.
Thanks, Chair. Just to update members very briefly on some changes to our learning team management. So Jan Pittman, who's currently the Western Area Learning Manager, is going to be taking on the role of Learning Manager for Norwich. So Jan will be joining Stuart and Jessica and I for future meetings at this committee. So Jan has worked with Norfolk Museum Service for many years, has a huge range of experiences, has a huge range of experience in delivering schools programmes and informal learning programmes. And has also, over the last year, been helping to line manage the Norwich learning team and has also been leading on the Norwich Castle activity plan. So Jan is stepping into his new role officially on the first of July, but is already working with the team in Norwich. He's based here a couple of days a week already. But having already had responsibility for supporting the team over the last year and delivering the activity plan, is already sort of very familiar with the Norwich teams and Norwich systems. And these changes don't affect the learning capacity here in Norwich. And Chair, at that point, what I'll do is hand back to Stuart for a section on business.
Oh, just before that, Councillor Birmingham, thank you for the points.
Thank you, Chair. Just curious now if you've managed to avoid any redundancies in the structure change for the...
Well, I can only speak for museums, but yes, there is nothing about that type of museums. Whereas the changes in the learning team management actually arose from a vacancy.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. And so Stuart, are you taking us through point nine of the visit numbers?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I've included, apologies, the table looks quite small on the report. So apologies if the figures are difficult to see. But we've had a really good start to the new exhibition of the Gloucester, which can be seen in the figures there year on year at Norwich Castle. So the exhibition opened on the 20th of February. So unfortunately, we're at the end of February, which is why we saw a small dip in numbers in February year on year as we were obviously, the galleries were dark for all of February up to the 25th as part of the de-install and install process. But then from March and April, you can see the significant increase in business numbers. 14,000 for March and 13,000, sorry, 14,000, which is against 6,000 year on year, and 13,000 against 8,000 on the previous year for April. And May is also, I'm pleased to say, double the figures, 12,6804 for May. So really positive impact and we're really looking forward to that exhibition proving really popular over the always busy summer months. Museum of Norwich also has had some really good performances. For the total financial year of 2022-23, you can see there 19,000 visitors against 7,700 the year before. Obviously, there is a lot to do with the pandemic there in terms of confidence of people getting back to museums and inside spaces. But you can see that numbers have really gone back to pre-pandemic levels, which is really good. And likewise, at Strangers Hall, we're getting close to pre-pandemic levels there also, 7,500 for the year against 3,100 the year before. Albeit, of course, that early in the year, 21-22, that museum was closed, of course, as part of that pandemic. But nonetheless, looking at really positive numbers. I just also want to update members on some social media highlights that provides us with our analytical data for our social media at Norwich museums. I've got three reports here for, which are year on year reports comparing 2022 to that, sorry, 2021-22 to 22-23, which I will share with the committee after the meeting so that you can see, because there's lots of really useful analytical data there. But just some highlights to talk through, starting with Norwich Castle. Our Instagram page, within our Instagram posts were the new branding. It was in the top three along with the Harford Brooch. The page reached just over 1 million users, which is 613,000 from 398,000 the previous year. Of course, some of that again will be because of activities and pandemic levels which had an impact on some of those social media posts. But again, the highlight there is the Harford Brooch and the Norwich Castle rebranding. And then finally, from 16,000 Twitter followers, which is 1% up from last year. And the highlights there again were the Harford Brooch. There seems to be an awful lot of activity and interest about the Harford Brooch. Just about the Harford Brooch. But also the National Quilting Day, which actually was in the top three of the most shared and talked about and liked posts of the last financial year. And then very quickly, just a couple of highlights from our other two museums. So Strangers Hall, Strangers Hall has now a profile reach of 11,000 for Instagram, which is 69% up from last year, which reflects a lot of the good work that's been going on in the museum there. The annual deep clean was by far and away across all of the different platforms, the most interested and talked about and shared piece of news coming out of that museum. And also with Facebook, had a page reach of 40,000 users. And Twitter, it now has 4.3 thousand followers, which is 1% up from last year. And last but not least, the Museum of Norwich, again, just some highlights. The Instagram page was only started this year, but has already had a, sorry, this financial year, I should say, and has already had a profile reach of 5.9 thousand. And Facebook page reach of 95,000 users, which is 13% up from the previous year. And Twitter is always been very prolific at the Museum of Norwich on Twitter, which now has 8.9 thousand followers, which again is 1% up from the previous year. So, and most of the talked about aspects across the, in fact, in the top three across all three platforms was interest around posts about the history of the building itself, which proves particularly popular to people of Norwich. But as I say, there's an awful lot of detail on there. It's all interesting stuff. And I'll happily share it to the committee so that you can look at the detail at your own leisure. Thank you.
That's great. Thank you very much, Stuart. We'll be very interested to have a look at that, all those data after the meeting. Thank you. And thank you also, Robin, you mentioned that Jan Pittman will be joining us for future committee meetings. We'll look forward to seeing Jan. Thank you very much. If there are no questions or queries on any of that, we'll move to item eight of our agenda, which is hearing from the voluntary organisations representatives. So Felicity, you've kindly provided us a written report. Is there anything you'd like to say further to this, please?
Not very further, Chair, but just to highlight that our in-focus of presence is to help Strangers Hall for their 17 years. And logically, Strangers Hall already have a number of improvements. As you know, actually, we may, we received the estimates, Felicity, and we could be, you know, be giving some financial aid towards that. And as Robin mentioned, I had to highlight that we are friends of supporting the British Northern Junction, rather than the Freeman of Norwich Fund in London, David, from Robin mentioned. And with the support of the NLEX Keep the Dust Programme. And we're also supporting the Conjunction Antique Display Case to build new temporary collections. I brought along my newsletters and I hope you saw that. On the last page, it highlights the Strangers Hall group involved in it. So I'm putting my, so that's all I know. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, Felicity. And as I often have occasion to say, thank you so much for your continuing support.
Thank you. I'll pass that on to the council.
Thank you, thank you. And also, Denisia, is there anything you'd like to report to us, please?
Just three very brief points. Ben Cass's talks programme has been continuing. We had a first time association with the Norwich and Norfolk Norwich Festival with one of our talks world offers in Rotherham Begum, and that really worked very well. It was a sell-out. It was lovely to be associated with the festival. The second thing is we continue our support of NUA, in fact, their graduates. We've always given a fine art prize to the graduates, but we've actually now got two prizes. The second prize will be for the new makers prize as well. That's £500 to, that we've got, we're judging that in this week and next week. And finally, to continue our fundraising so that we can support these excellent projects when they come up. We've got our art auction. So if you've got any artworks that you want to get rid of or moved on, and if you want to purchase new artworks, the art auction takes place in the council chamber on the sixth of July. I've got a lead us here for people if they're interested in attending. It should be very fun and it's a great fundraiser for us. All in the report.
Great. Thank you very much. Are there any comments or questions for either Felicity or Denisia? If not, well, again, thank you very much for your continued support for contemporary arts. And I hope to see people at the art exhibition, sorry, art auction, rather, in July. The only other item we have on the agenda is the confirmation of the meeting dates, which I hope everybody is now apprised of, which means I'll sort of, well, I shall see everybody in September for the next one. That concludes this meeting. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.